The regular council meeting, March the 6th, 2013, will now be called new or. Ask the city clerk to please do the roll call.
Mr. Michael?
Here.
Mr. Jones?
Here.
Mr. Palumbo?
Here.
Mr. Geering?
Here.
Mayor Feig?
Here. Could we stand and pledge allegiance to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have some guests tonight. Lisa, Chaz?
Kieza.
Your own.
Okay. Good evening, everybody. We forward you this evening, I think you each have a copy of a debt ordinance that we drafted for the consideration of council, which if adopted this evening will authorize the issuance of a $500,000 guaranteed revenue note to Pennvest for the Pennvest loan. This is all in conjunction with the Redstone Interceptor project and the...
The H-2O.
That's right, and the H-2O money, that's correct. And again, if adopted tonight, it'll authorize the execution of that note and the delivery of the documents that Pennvest's required to them.
And is that, what do you call an extension? To this loan, to Pennvest?
Extension? It's an actual note.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So we would be authorizing the actual issuance of the note today. The terms are in here. The interest rate for the first five years is 1 percent.
Is what?
1 percent. And then it goes up to 1.868 for the remainder of the term. And there's a debt service schedule attached to the debt.
What's the term length?
Twenty years. So the first five is 1 percent. Balance is 1.868. It's pretty good for a loan. Can't turn them down, even though they're harder. Attached is also a form of the note itself that will be delivered to Pennvest at the closing, which is supposed to occur at the end of April. If you look at that, there might be some provisions in there that you want to change. Again, that's just a substantial form of the note, so there's some things that we could tinker with in there between now and the actual closing.
Is that something that everybody understands here?
Which you're going to be pledging, and the revenues generated from the sewer system, but if for some reason that they don't, if they're not sufficient to pay for the debt service, you're also saying it will kick in on taxing power too if we're moved to. That's why it's called a guaranteed revenue note.
Sewer you're going to do?
Correct.
I have a couple of quick questions. I didn't get a chance to review all of this because it just was in my box today afternoon and I picked it up. And then we just got this Exhibit A, which is, I guess, the amortization of this note. But remember, I was looking at this on page four when we're talking about, when the mayor was asking about the term of the note. It's listing the term of the note of 276 months, which is over 20 years. Because I was going to bring it up that this amortization, this Exhibit A, is only for 240 months, so I guess there's a...
They give you up to three years to sort of build the thing before they start making new A. So the three years is built in to allow for the construction of the system. So then, when the note itself is issued, we have to start paying.
Okay, so that's where the other 36 months to 276 comes into play.
Exactly.
Okay. So then, is there a...
Start date?
Well, right now, the closing is still...
Or we'll get to skip 36 months whenever we decide we don't have the cash flow at any given month.
When we close the loan on April 30th, we'll know the start date of the amortization at that point.
Okay, and that's when this...
That's when it kicks in, right.
And go back.
Right.
And so we get three years to build the project and...
We might get up to that. They give you up to that, but I don't know, you know, it depends. We'll have to find out in between now and then what they say.
But the payments won't start until after the project's complete?
That's what I believe, yeah.
Okay. Have you had a chance to review this yet?
Oh, yeah. We've been working together on it. I'm doing some parts of it and she's doing other parts. This is something that they prepared.
Okay, because I saw in the back that there's a group of 10 pages that were put together on December 17th.
The only real thing that's important is, what is the interest rate? When does the payment start? And when are they over? It's a three-point question. Just answer that and we move on.
Yeah, that was actually generated by Pennvest, that thing, on December 17th.
Okay.
Anything else we want to know?
We have, we have the quotes on this project already, correct?
Yeah.
We have a bid opening and there is part of your agenda tonight is...
Your words.
Yeah, a recommendation.
Just trying to connect the dots, making sure.
And that's one part of a three-part puzzle. Lisa's going to talk about another part of it shortly, so.
Should I go on now?
Yes.
Okay. I know that part of this project, you have H-2O grant money. With H-2O grant money, you have to, it's kind of cockamamie in that you have to spend the money first and then they give you the grant money, which means you need to have access to probably not a million dollars, but some sum of money that you're able to pay out as invoices come in and requisitions are presented by your engineer. We talked briefly, among us three anyway, about the need to perhaps get some kind of interim financing for that piece of it, where you have sort of like a line of credit that you can draw down on. And then when the H-2O money comes in, after it's requisitioned from the state, you can actually use it to pay off that loan, so it's sort of a revolving line, meaning you wouldn't have to borrow the full million dollars of the grant money, but whatever you think might be, have to be requisitioned, plus a little bit more.
Well, we'd be spared up to that point.
Exactly, exactly. So, I don't know, if we were talking maybe between John and I, we thought maybe 650 or 750 or...
Somewhere between 650 and 750,000 dollars of a revolving line of credit. So then that way, if we get a $200,000 payment request from the contractor, your habit will make that request, submit to DECD for reimbursement, get that money back in, put it back into the account so you have continuing method of paying the contractors.
Kind of a wash, but you got to pay that first.
Sure.
Your revolving money, that 750, is that an arbitrary number?
It is an arbitrary number.
Why would we go for like a million just to have it?
Well, here's the thing. You're going to be submitted with requisitions periodically, I mean invoices periodically from your contractors. You're not going to have a million dollar invoice all at once.
The 750, you think will be good.
We think that that's going to be plenty, huh?
We do, and we just...
How much do you normally do, John?
Well, there are two types. You can get a revolving one, or you can get a million dollar and that's all you're allowed.
Right.
You can bring that type of loan also. I've had those happen before, but when you have those happen, if you have an issue where you happen to need more than a million dollars, you're dead in a million. At this point, you still have that 700,000 dollars revolving account, so.
You guys have done this before, we haven't.
If you're interested in doing that, I can solicit proposals from various banks in the area and see what kind of interest rate that they might go.
Are you going to need a resolution of that?
I think you, I think you did that last month and Lisa just wants to make sure, did she present it?
Those interest rates won't be quite as low as...
Not quite as low, but you might be surprised at how low you're going to see. They should be fair, they should be, I would say, under 2 percent. Because we'll be talking, how many, two years, three years?
Yeah, the maximum would be two years.
Two years. So two-year note that's revolving, we could probably get rates under 2 percent. No, but this is 20-year money that's under 2 percent, you know? That's the difference.
Lisa just did one from Anell Township there in financing. I think it was like 1.83 percent.
And that loan limit should not be any longer than what it takes to do the job?
That's correct.
And we're talking about paying it back in a year or so?
Your H-2O grant has to be expended by June 30th, next of 2014.
What's 2 percent of 750,000 dollars?
Oh, man, you're going to make me give you that.
150,000?
150,000.
My mind's working right, 1.4.
Yeah.
But you're not going to have it out for the full term.
Yeah.
And you're never going to probably have 750 out.
Yeah, I almost say spend 150,000.
15,000 on 750.
Yeah, 15,000.
2 percent, 15,000. 1 percent would be 7,500.
Yeah.
10 percent, 7,500.
Okay.
So 15,000. Or give them a...
Assuming the whole thing was out from day one, the full 2 years.
Yeah.
Full two years.
You're not going to do that. You won't spend that much money in interest.
What is the limit, what time limit do you think for this job?
The job should be completed based upon getting the financing in place, getting the contractor in place. We, in conversations that we've had with the design engineer up to now, we believe the contract should be finished by the end of this summer, so.
And the H-2O must be done by...
The H-2O money must be spent by June 30th, 2014.
Well, then that interest rate wouldn't be all that much.
No. But you need it to basically get this contract moving and have it moving completely, so.
Sounds good.
You'd only use that revolving line of credit? That would be for this project specific?
That's correct. And that'll be tied into, generally that's tied into the loan law.
Yes, and the bank will require our engineer to file on, you know, certification that all this stuff has been done.
On this project.
Is there a forgiveness amount on that or not?
We could negotiate.
I know there has to be. Everybody's in business to make a dollar, so ensure that forgiveness is some sort.
To answer your question, we made a motion at the last meeting to acquire her services for help with the Pennvest loan and also separate motions and resolutions that passed to have our help with the interim party.
So what do you mean?
I think that was all taken care of.
I just want to make sure I understood what you guys wanted me to do.
Yes, we appreciate your support.
I think we understand. Okay?
Yeah.
Next. Lieutenant Jones, Salvation Army? All right, any comments on any of the agenda items? Without being said, we'll ask the city clerk if he'll read resolutions.
Be resolved by the city council of the city of Uniontown to accept the report of the treasurer for the month of February 2013 and staying hereby accepted in progress.
No comment.
Mr. Jones?
No comment.
Mr. Palumbo?
No comment.
Mr. Geer?
No comment.
Mr. Michael?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Palumbo?
Yes.
Mr. Geering?
Uh, yes.
Mayor Feig?
Yes.
Be resolved by the city council of the city of Uniontown to hereby accept the minutes of the February 6th, 2013 regular council meeting.
Mike?
No comment.
Jones?
No comment.
Palumbo?
Geer?
No comment.
Mr. Michael?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Palumbo?
Yes.
Mr. Geering?
Yes.
Mayor Feig?
Yes.
Be resolved by the city council of the city of Uniontown. Council hereby directs the director of accounts and finance to make payment of the following invoices for services rendered or products for our field work for the city of Uniontown for February 2013 invoices in the general fund, Service fund, $236,76.70, which includes a $5,094.66 transfer to recycling. Off-street, $15,259.75. Recycling, $3,615.80. Recreation, $5,500.23. Highway, $40,659.1. Library, $1,902.20. Community development, $492.70.
No comment.
Mr. Jones?
No comment.
Palumbo?
No comment.
Geer?
No comment.
Mr. Michael?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Palumbo?
Yes.
Mr. Geering?
Yes.
Mayor Feig?
Yes.
Be resolved by the city council of the city of Uniontown that the following purpose be refunded their city of Uniontown local service tax for the year, the reason and the amount appearing after step forth for a total of $218.
No comment.
Jones?
No comment.
Palumbo?
No comment.
Geer?
No comment.
Mr. Michael?
Yes.
Mr. Jones? Mr. Palumbo?
Yes.
Mr. Geering?
Yes.
Mayor Feig?
Yes.
Be resolved by the city council of the city of Uniontown to adopt the best ordinance number 1669 and ordinance of city council of the city of Uniontown, Bay County, Pennsylvania, formal action constituting a debt ordinance under the local government unit debt act, authorizing the occurring of the non-electorate debt by the issuance of a guaranteed sewer revenue note in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $500,000, covenanting to pay and pledging unlimited taxing power for the guarantee of the payment of the note, establishing a sinking fund and appointing a sinking fund depository, fixing the form, interest rate, maturity, redemption, and other provisions for the payment thereof, ratifying the exceptions that were proposed before the purchase of the note, authorizing a filing or required documents with the Department of Community and Economic Development, ratifying and directing certain actions of officers, and making other covenants and provisions in respect of the note.
Is that what you were just talking about?
Yes.
Mr. Mike?
I have no comment.
Jones?
No comment.
Palumbo?
No comment.
Geer?
No comment.
Mr. Michael?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Palumbo?
Yes.
Mr. Geering?
Yes.
Mayor Feig?
Yes.
Be resolved by the city council of the city of Uniontown that upon the review of bids for the Redstone Interceptor upgrade project and upon the recommendation of McMillan Engineering to award the contract to the low bidder for alternate bid one, inland water pollution control in the amount of $1,796,165, along with a change order to reduce the scope of the project by $547,029.
Mike? Yeah?
You, you guys are...
I only think, I had discussed with you guys several of yet. If we're short $200,000, $300,000, I would recommend to finish this project. We are dealing with a 70-year-old interceptor here. The cost will be split between the three entities. They're under agreement to go ahead. No matter what we do, they have to pay their fair share. And I would recommend finishing it.
How much more?
319,000 dollars is...
How many more feet say?
Roughly around 1,000 foot.
So we're paying 300-some thousand, 300-some thousand dollars for the 1,002?
Yeah, the price this bid came in was pretty reasonable. I'd hate to see us have to rebid it out, say, 10 years down the road, or if we have to literally dig it up. You need that, more than half that cost in the replacement of that line.
Just logistically, I know McMillan's sorry to discuss it, but at this point, are you taking home?
Yeah, we'll be taking over the inspection services.
And you're, we've been overseeing this. You've been in the meetings, you have filled...
I've been, yeah, we've had several meetings with the, with McMillan Engineering. We've discussed, we actually discussed this and met with the contractor on Monday and reviewed the contract with the contractor, did an interview with the contractor, basically to assure that he was capable and that he had the manpower to do the work. He's ready to move forward. We do believe there are some line items still within the contract within that 1.2 million dollars that we may not need. So there may be a cost savings in the 1.2 million dollars that we may be able to attribute or basically reassign to some of the items that are removed as part of this contract. So ultimately, even though we think we're 319,000 dollars short right now, we may have monies within the contract that we don't use that we can put towards this contract.
Now you're talking about over a million instead of 700-some thousand.
Or, yeah, I'm talking...
To borrow.
Oh, wow.
Well, if you, if you had to borrow it, yes.
Right.
The issue would be you have some money laying around that you wouldn't have to go. But if you, my recommendation would be, instead of going back to Pennvest, which would be a new application for additional money, that we look towards a local bank to borrow this on a shorter basis, if we need the money. Like I said, we may, we may find 100 or 120,000 in this contract that we don't use.
That we could save.
That we could save and put towards these line items that were taken out.
Right.
Okay, and then that way, we can basically reestablish the contract or reissue those items.
So what you talked about earlier?
And Mayor, Council, you guys should know that there were three bids. One of them was over 5 million, one of them was over 2.3 billion in this low bids.
That 5 billion was your bid, wasn't it?
Yeah.
What I want to know is, this project took 700,000, we talked about not counting 300. After this, your part's done. There's still 1,000 feet to go after that. The deal's fine, huh?
The entire, the entire contract was 1.7 million dollar bid, okay? We're removing approximately 1,000 feet of line to get it down to a project that we can do within the 1.5 million dollars we have. Okay? Now, within that 1.2, there are still some line items in there that I don't think we will use. There's some 30-inch pipe and stuff like that that, in talking to Phil, we don't even know that it exists in the ground. So we may not even use that money and then we can actually change work back into the contract some items were taken out now.
So you can go further down with the money here.
And the further down, we're talking about Jobius II, Cuss's yard underneath their buildings.
Yeah.
So I mean, it would be a major hit to reroute those lines, trust me.
We'd be selling lumber.
We'd be selling lumber.
We just have to be invested for the whole thing, even if some costs is over the money.
Right. The damage might not be as much, what John's trying to explain to you. There are some cost items there that we might not be able to use or not.
What we can save would go forward to add the 300,000.
That is correct. So we may come back to you in July and say, hey, we need to go find 180,000 dollars.
Right.
But it could be a huge scam.
I agree with Phil. It's something that really does need, uh...
Hey, if we're going to do it, most of us will do it right.
Right.
All right, that was my call. Thank you, Mayor.
Jones? Palumbo? Geer?
I'm still trying to connect some of the dots I think that Joby was working on in the paperwork here. Thanks, Phil, for telling us about the three bids. And this is the lowest one that came in. I'm going to say 1.8, because it's 1,796,000 dollars. Okay? Now, John, you just said that we've only got, because I guess of the H-2O grant and the other money that we have, we only have 1.5 banked.
That's correct.
Okay? Which is why then, we're saying that we've got 315,000 dollars short on the overall project.
That's correct.
All right? The other two numbers that they have on here though is with the 1.8, that we reduced the scope by almost 550,000 dollars, which brought us down to, you know, the 1.2 that you were talking about. So is there, we reduced the, and that's where I get confused between, we reduced the scope of the work by 550,000 dollars, but then we're saying that we only need 315,000 dollars to do the 550,000 dollars worth of work.
The missing piece to your puzzle is there were some fingers off of the Nayline Interceptor that were getting down under the scope of work that aren't part of that back, that added in back in 319,000. Our primary goal is to get the main interceptor done. And if there, the fingers that were in the original design, we know we're not going to be able to get them.
The main interceptor is somewhere...
Main interceptor is, goes from...
From sewage plant, there's three of them, Gary. This one goes from the sewage plant to Grant Street all the way out to Hopwood.
It's Redstone.
This is the Redstone.
This is the Redstone. This is the Redstone. Pittsburgh Street all the way down through there.
Yeah.
Rotary, under, by the way, we're walking up through...
Now, that's Cold Lake.
Oh, that's Cold Lake.
This one goes underneath the city of Uniontown, out the classes and out towards the law parks and not just...
Gotcha. So what are the, what are the, say, the two fingers that are then completely off the table right now then?
There's actually more than two. There's actually several little...
There's about 14 of them, but they won't be off the table.
Yeah.
Well, I kind of knew that because eventually it's going to have to get done.
This system was put in 1931, '32. It's overdue.
Kind of as John's saying, this is the heart.
This is the heart of the system. This is the interstate of the San Terre Sewer System in the city of Uniontown.
This is a line within a line.
Right.
That's what we're doing. We're relining it.
Right.
It's, and this project, again, as I stated before to you, this project ultimately is going to help the entire community because it's going to take a lot of infiltration out of the system in that open jointed system you have right now, so.
And I'll be honest with you, Mayor, this technology they have today, it's going to be the future for towns like Uniontown.
Is that where we was going to go, me and you, to look at?
Yeah.
To Virginia, or what?
Virginia.
Versus digging up streets and we have systems going underneath buildings.
Right.
This is the way to go.
So that's going to eliminate a lot of digging up streets and stuff.
You don't really have an option. It's the way to go.
That, that might, that is way gold, just back. It's not digging up streets. Okay, that's all.
Okay?
Mr. Michael?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Palumbo?
Yes.
Mr. Geering?
Yes.
Mayor Feig?
Yes.
Be resolved by the city council of the city of Uniontown that Michael Elecic retired from the Uniontown Fire Department effective March 1, 2013, and that he has 156 days left totaling $19,145.79. 29 vacation days totaling $5,237.98. Two personal days totaling $251.24. $650 for his 2013 clothing allowance for a total of $25,399.94. Be resolved to deduct his health insurance copay of $60, $4 through the end of 2014 in one month sum of $3,008 from his 25, 394.94 channel compensated absences for a net total being paid in full of $22,386.94. Mr. Elecic will resume his health insurance copay in 2015 until such time as he reaches 65.
Does, does this stay with an employee? Whether they be in the state, out of the state?
What is it?
Well, let's say this, or anyone, was to move out of the city, out of the state. Would this health benefit still be there until they're 65?
He, um, he has healthcare until he's 65. He'll have the same policy as the rest of the city. If he chooses to go somewhere else, he can be considered out of network, but like...
That's what I was, I wasn't asking specifically for him.
If Blair would decide to, well, Blair's a bad choice, but if someone...
I'm glad you agreed.
Yeah, if Mr. Mahoney would decide to move to Florida, he could use the plan, he's out of network, but he, we wouldn't give him a Florida healthcare plan.
I think there's also, also, at least with DCT, there's a national plan that you pay extra for. I think that's what he's asking to do.
Now, if you're in the drop, which he was, he can retire, what, five years early? Is he 60 or how old is he?
No, he's 50.
In other words, for five years, under the drop program, the city of Uniontown must pay his health benefits until he's 65.
It's not because of the drop. The drop is the separation. Because of the contract, their collective bargaining agreement, they're able to retire at 60 and receive full benefits until 55.
It's different than the drop.
And what would that amount be? Just food for thought. For five years, health benefits, would the health benefits plus 20 thousand a year?
Yeah, over 100,000 dollars.
Thereabout.
Yeah, food for thought.
Okay, just so we all understand where we're...
A little bit more than that. A little bit more than that.
Yeah, okay. Chuck?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, before you go on that, you know, Mike's retirement, he's been 30-plus years as a firefighter for the City of Uniontown. And I would follow him into any building that's on fire in this city. He's probably one of the best firefighters I have under my command. He's not afraid to face the devil anywhere where it comes up and meets you in the face. And I think we're losing a real valuable asset with Mike's retirement, and I wish him well in the future.
We do as well. I was just asking a question about dollars for dollars.
Oh, I understand. Yeah, the drop plan doesn't come into effect, that's part of the union contract with the medical benefit to age 65.
Mr. Gentlemen. Palomba.
No question.
Gary.
Oh, I'd just like to echo some of the chief sentiments about Mr. Elecic. He's a less, he's been a stellar city employee and firefighter. He's gonna be out of this area for a little while, but I'm sure whenever he's in the neighborhood, and he will be coming back, that he's still gonna be an asset to the city. And I'd like to thank him for his time and his service, and wish him, wish him well and all the best.
Mr. Michael?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Palomba?
Yes.
Mr. Gary?
Yes.
Mayor, please.
Yes.
It is resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown, Pennsylvania Department of Transportation, as plans to replace the bridge on SR 51 in Uniontown, Pennsylvania, and to accept the department's offer to purchase, to acquire tract of land from the City of Uniontown for said bridge project on SR 51, Row Office Project Number 120321, in the amount of 7,300 dollars.
Phil, let's head it down.
That's, uh, over there by the statue, they wanna purchase a piece of-
The doughboy?
Yeah, for 7,000, I think, or something.
No, not the doughboy.
No, this is-
Fireman's doughboy.
Under here at the corner.
Yeah.
Pittsburgh Street.
Yeah.
Right across from the train station. How much, how much track they was?
Not a very big piece of track. They wanna use that bridge replacement.
If I may, I, they did some of the plan with it. And checking the tax records real quick on, on Fan Power, we've checked out his website, there are two tracks of land that the city owns. Track 38040676 and 38040053. The blue highlighted portion is the sliver taking that they wanna take, this portion being through track 0676, and then a bigger portion through 0053, which is Cold Lake running some street, so. But it's all on this side of the road.
Is this 51?
This is, this is 51 right here. So this is, this is actually the bridge, the project right here.
Is that at the train station?
Train station is over here. So this is more mountain and narrow.
You telling me that that fat furnace is over here?
Uh, famous supply. Famous supply is, famous supply is, yeah, it's right here. There are two tracks of land that the City of Uniontown actually-
This place is on the parking lot of that, right here?
No, actually, this dotted line right here is the wall, if the parking lot, the famous supply, see this dotted line right here? That's the retaining wall.
Cause here's Cold Lake running.
That's correct.
Or this way. Okay, so you're talking about the monument.
Monument is actually right here.
It's on this side, right.
How wide is it?
That is a sliver taking, um, actually, it's a thousand square foot that we're taking, so, including this.
I can't do that, but we've, we've been in discussions, in the process of the Rotary Walk, that's not gonna touch the Rotary Walk, is it?
No.
Is it close to it?
I mean, it's on the track of land, they cross it, but it's just part of the bridge probably. Anything, anything they would do that would, if they were to touch the Rotary Walk, they would have to, basically, they would place it in.
So this is the bridge here.
That's correct.
As I sit here and think, whether we accept this or not, they can take it under eminent domain.
I was gonna ask that question, Blair. I was gonna ask that question, Blair, if we say hell, they're gonna do it anyway, right?
Yeah.
Probably, but they-
They're gonna do it anyhow, they can take it under eminent domain for the purpose of a highway.
We still provide just, just-
Had to take him 25 years to rule it.
Me and him, I was thinking of a different location than John was talking about. I thought it was further down property that we don't own. We must own that sliver of land on this other side of the creek, up to that building.
That's correct.
According to that.
That's correct.
All right. I'm for accepting it, cause they'd take it anyhow.
You give up too easy, Blair.
Oh, give me the money, if they, they would take it off of us.
If you were to, I mean, basically, if you were not accepted, like J.W. stated, they would basically take it through eminent domain. If you thought the 7,300 wasn't sufficient, you'd have to hire some, some appraiser or something to contradict.
Well, the idea of the money that I raised, the fact that-
I mean, the time could be stretched. Even at light up there, they're forever in that.
That's correct.
Because we didn't sign until they put money in that script.
Yes.
Mr. Michael?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Palomba?
Yes.
Mr. Gary?
Yes.
Mayor, please.
Yes.
It is resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown, Joanne Hunt, via planning to serve on Uniontown Downtown Business District Authority's Board of Directors for returning effective March 1, 2013, and expiring the last day of February, 2018.
I might ask that to be tabled, nobody seems to know this woman.
Who is the lady?
You, Mr. Hunt?
Yes, I know her.
Or do you know her?
And I think she'd be an asset to the board, and there is a recommendation letter, and, uh, I'll call it references or experience letter that she submitted that's here as, as well. Let's move now.
Mr. Michael?
Anybody else on the phone, Joby?
No.
Um, sorry, do I?
You both?
No.
Mr. Jones?
No.
Mr. Palomba?
No.
Mr. Gary?
Yes.
Mayor, please.
No.
It is resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown, where at the Palmas, the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation is the agency charged with granting permits to allow placement of signs or banners within states right of way, and whereas, PNDOT requires the city to pass a resolution to authorize replacement of banners or signs, and set certain limits on set banners and signs, and whereas the city wishes to allow banners or signs relative to national, regional, or local functions or charitable affairs. Now therefore, be it resolved, this application is for, um, if ever that banner at the location of Fayette and Union, for the Miracle Bunny Trail, 5K Runway, and Kids Hop, and then say Fayette County. 310 to 323.
No comment. Jones?
No comment.
Palomba?
No comment.
Gary?
No comment.
Mr. Michael?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Palomba?
Yes.
Mr. Gary?
Yes.
Mayor, please.
Yes.
It is resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to hire Delbert DeWitt full-time to the Uniontown Police Department after successfully completing his 16-month probationary period effective February 24, 2013, at salary of 1943, an hour.
Would you like to look at the call, Chief?
Yes, sir. Oscar DeWitt has been with the police department for the last 16 months. During that probationary period, he's been a pleasure to work with, he's a consummate professional, and he is an absolute asset to not only the police department but the City of Uniontown, and I'd really appreciate your support.
Does that mean you recommend him?
Yes, sir.
Oh. Mr. Michael?
I know DJ, well, Delbert, you can call him DJ. About two years, he's probably one of the strongest guys you're gonna meet. He's a yes sir, no sir type person. Oh, if anybody off duty, on duty, there's been many times that, because he lives in the city, I've seen him show up when probably he shouldn't be there, you know, to help out, can I do this, can I do that? I really think that he is a, he's, um, something we should be proud of, and I applaud the chief and the mayor. We continue to hire good quality policemen, have a good force, and he's, he's testament to that, and I think that's, that's because of the mayor and the chief and how they run the police. I'm just dialing, buddy. Thank you, Mayor.
I echo that. What I know about him, he is what you said. He's not just a cop, he's a public relations person. And it takes a lot to get both, and I think what you said is right. I'm definitely supporting. Mr. Jones?
I don't know the gentleman, but I recommend anything to the chief, support he's name.
I echo what there is.
Mr. Gary, no comment.
Mr. Michael?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Palomba?
Yes.
Mr. Gary?
Yes.
Mayor, please.
Yes.
It is resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to adopt the speed hump request policies and procedures submitted by John Everett, K2, and Gary.
Mr. Michael?
John, you wanna review, can you review this, Mayor? See here?
Sure. Everybody's wearing black.
As presented last month, the speed hump proposal basically requires the residents within the street or within the block of that street to have at least 75% support for any speed hump request. That request would have to be brought forth and, and, as part of the package, there is a request form, they would have to submit it to council as part of the request form. Council would consider it. I would have to review it, there are some engineering stipulations that have to take place that were part of the package as part of the ordinance. Would have to meet that criteria, and then if council agrees to it, they would act upon it at council meeting, and then as the budget is available, then the speed humps would be constructed by the Public Works Department. The speed hump itself would have a base of 12 feet, no more than a four-inch rise. There are some design standards within that, within the package. The package has been available, like was, as was presented last month's meeting for the public's review. I've received no phone calls in my office, and I don't believe any have come into the city opposing or even questioning anything within the proposed ordinance, so, again, as, as last month, I would recommend it, at this point, council will adopt the ordinance.
Um, I'll go with that. This whole process is very confusing, me and reluctant, but as I do with everything, the mayor and I, I think, went to most of the meetings, and I have to applaud John. John's really put his time in on this one, and everything John's done for the city before has worked out in ways supposed to work out. Although I'm reluctant, if John, if you're gonna recommend this, I'm gonna go with it. Thank you.
That's my comment. Well, this is kinda touchy. You're damned if you do and damned if you don't, and I'd like to be on both sides. I just don't know how you do that.
I might find a way to do that, you either, so if you do, you tell me.
I mean, I love y'all. Mr. Palomba?
This is just for the procedures, like for them to-
It's a procedure, Bill. And basically, the ultimate decision still comes back to city council. Anybody that would request it-
It's up to the residents of that area, too.
75% of the residents have to agree to it, and that, it's a super majority that would have to agree to it.
But that just brings it to us, right?
That just brings you ultimately for the final decision, so. Just because they get 75%, doesn't mean that they get it.
John, they're gonna bring it to you, you're gonna look at it. If you think it's garbage, it's done.
If it doesn't meet the criteria within those standards-
If you think it meets the criteria, you'll bring it to us.
Well, I'll still bring it to you, but my recommendation would be to deny it, so.
So this, that just gets it, the 75% just gets it in front of us.
It gets it in front of us, that's correct.
So we have a policy with this.
It's a formal procedure to get it in front of you.
And I do agree with the mayor, I mean, this is touchy, but, I mean, that's why we hired John, he hasn't felt this yet, so.
Well, every now and then, we get into a predicament where you just don't, you get in the corner, and you don't wanna hurt anybody, you wanna do what's right.
Yeah.
And sometimes it's hard when you, the right thing's not always the popular thing. So, again, we wanna do what's right, and I'm sure you're trying to help us do that.
That's correct.
At least, we can breathe tonight, we don't have to make that decision.
That's correct.
Thank you, John.
Jones?
No, just thank you for all your hard work, John, and, you know, it was a very touchy subject, I live up in the area too, and it's an anti-do, anti-dog kind of scenario. John, thank you for all your help on this.
Mr. Gary?
Uh, yeah, I do have still a couple of questions. I brought the issue up before on potentially, and also talked to the solicitor on who's, who's eligible and qualified to vote when we're talking about coming up with the 75%, and I don't think that-
The policy does describe that, it would only be the residents on that street requesting the speed humps. Nobody else would be able-
Not, not the property owner?
Well, actually, that actually is a property owner or the residence. If it's, if it's a rental piece of property that, that rental, the person that lives there can actually, even though they don't have a stake in the, in the land, they still live there, they still occupy the house, they're still part of the community, so they would have a vote.
Let's, let's pretend that we've got a house that's a duplex, all right? So if, if we say that one property is entitled to one vote, of the three entities that are potentially involved, somebody on the one side of the duplex or the other, or an up and down versus the property owner, which of those three people gets to cast that one vote?
I think the way you have it is that each person in the house would be a resident, right?
That's correct.
It's not necessarily one property, one person, one vote.
That's correct.
An owner who's not a resident gets a vote based on one property, one vote.
Right? Okay. I think we should-
I think that's what it's described in there.
I don't think it's in here.
It talks about-
But that's why I was talking to the solicitor about-
Yeah, and that's what we basically, that's my recommendation to Gary.
Where is it?
It says, "The petition must contain one adult signature per household and be endorsed by 75% or more of the households in each block."
That's what I bought.
So the household is the people who live in the house. The household is the person, the residents of the house.
Okay, but, again, if it's a duplex, then a duplex gets two votes, and if it's a multi-tenant-
Well, apartment is a household. So if it's an apartment, then it's a household. There's 10 apartments, it's 10 households.
Okay.
A household's a household. A household, a household, that is correct.
I'm with you. Now, I had talked, I had talked to J.W. whether or not we qualify who the resident is, because this is a policy that's going into effect all over the city. And we know that we have transient people. So part of our conversation was whether or not a resident has that, whether or not a tenant has to be there for one year as a resident to be eligible to be to vote, instead of somebody that moved into the neighborhood last week or last month.
The the discussion there was whether or not voting should be limited to what you would call a bona fide resident or just a resident.
Let's be frank about this. We're we're using an arbitrary number of seventy-five percent. So if there are a hundred people that live on the street, three of them moved in yesterday, and you get them to sign the petition, I mean, I don't think you're really, you're not gonna split that up here. And it's it's a majority of the street. I don't think we're gonna go, John, we're not gonna go onto the street and and check everybody's name, are we? We're not like to, we're not-
I'm gonna, I'm gonna do a check to make sure that the people that sign the petition live on that-
Yeah, but you're not gonna like, see how many live there? I mean, that's a whole-
No, no, I mean-
Who's gonna check that, Gary? If somebody lives there, here? How you gonna, how you gonna prove that?
Well, then their name's gonna be on a petition, and there would be a signed lease. I mean-
So we're gonna go to the landlord and check every lease?
Well, you you would. I mean, you know, this is a policy. I thought that whenever we're talking about stuff, specifically right now, we're talking about speed humps, okay? But this is a policy that we should be able to use on multiple city, you know, if somebody wanted a stop sign, or if somebody wanted, you know, some something else in their community. You know, if if they wanted a ten mile an hour speed limit instead of a twenty, a twenty-five, it would, it would be something that they should be able to use.
Stop signs and speed limits are different animals. They they require traffic studies.
Yeah. Well, I was just bringing those up quick off 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 the top type of thing on who's eligible and who isn't eligible. Because the other thing that we're talking about here, I'm sorry, but let me continue, since you-
Well, but, hey, I'll go with that. I'll be back when you're done.
Okay. The other issue-
You're not gonna have a conversation. Why should I say that?
Well, it's a new issue.
Hold on, I have to say.
Okay. What we're talking about, because when we budgeted and we put a budget together, there is no money in the budget right now for speed humps.
And that's addressed in the policy also, because in the policy, it says it's only when monies are available.
And that was my question. How do we determine when there are monies available and when there isn't money available? And it's if it's not budgeted, so that you get your speed hump, you get your speed hump. But then there's, you don't get yours because there's no money in in the budget that's that's available.
John?
That's suggested in the policy also, is on a first-come, first-served basis, when monies are available, when the city can afford it. That is absolutely in the policy. So if you get, if you get ten requests this year, okay, and you've got no money this year, then you look at next year's budget, and if you can afford to do four of them, you put the first four that came in front of you ahead, and they get their, their, that is in the policy right now.
John?
Yes.
You're an engineer, right?
Yes.
Could you define something for me?
Try.
What is the real difference in broadcasting and tuning in? Can we vote?
Now, I've got another question, Mayor. How much, because John, you are the engineer. Basically, what's the cost on a speed hump?
Uh, probably a couple thousand, no?
Two thousand, no? Okay.
That, Mayor?
What do we, do we have any idea?
That, Mayor?
I mean, throughout the city?
Mr. Michael?
Oh, I know. I'm studying. I don't remember that.
Sir, did you have a question? Did you have a question?
This question to me was how many would be on Oakland Avenue?
I was looking at the twelve-foot. The twelve-foot, that's-
Right.
You know, when you say the speed one, you say the speed one. Twelve-foot is okay.
So, yeah, it's to be twelve-foot and four inches high, and that's so you don't get that abrupt bump. It's more gradual. You have to slow down comfortably. Go over a twelve-foot wide, four-inch-high speed hump. The speed limit would be about twenty-five mile an hour, which is the posted speed limit.
Twelve inches. Twelve, twelve inches.
Twelve feet wide.
Oh, oh, that'll be a twelve-foot.
It's a gradual slope.
It's a gradual slope.
Don't be having a carpool somewhere.
You have to slow down. You can comfortably go over that at twenty-five mile an hour. A emergency vehicle, like a fire truck, would not be able to go over that.
That's wrong.
Did you have a question?
Yes, I was in Florida a couple of weeks ago, and they had-
They have to be at least two hundred fifty to four hundred feet.
Plastic speed bumps.
Plastic?
And the, one of the councilmen down there I had breakfast with, and he said they take them from different streets. The council decides to try to slow the traffic down, and then they go and pick them up, and then they might take them to another street later on. But they're, they're a real thick plastic.
Right.
And they take them from street to street to slow up the traffic. And they do that in Holly Hill and Daytona Beach. And they, the council decides what street for that period of time they're gonna put them on.
Yeah, my my brother lives in Reno. They do that too, too. They move them around. I was wondering, are they heavy? Are they hard to move?
They're, they're real thick. They're almost like the thing they put electric cables in, and they run them across the highway. And they're real thick, and I I thought he said they were like seven hundred dollars, eight hundred dollars.
Eight?
Mm-hmm. Yes.
Maybe you oughta put them on Union Street. Union Street would be nice, but it's a start to do.
Yeah, wait a minute. I don't know. We're not gonna announce, basically. Go ahead.
The adoption of speed hump request policies and procedures submitted by John Everett, K two engineering. Mr. Michael?
Yes.
Mr. Palumbo?
Yes.
Mr. Gary?
I'm gonna vote now.
Mayor fight?
Yes.
They resolve by City Council, the City of Uniontown, that council break for executive sessions personnel matters. Mr. Michael?
Yes.
Mr. Palumbo?
Yes.
Mr. Gary?
Yes.
Mayor fight?
Yes.
They resolve by City Council, the City of Uniontown, that council reconvenes from executive session at six oh-five P.M. Mr. Michael?
Yes.
Mr. Palumbo?
Yes.
Mr. Gary?
Yes.
Mayor fight?
Yes.
They resolve by City Council, the City of Uniontown, to formally request that Sergeant Brett Fosley of Uniontown Police Department to submit to an independent medical examination in order to assess its ability to return to duty.
Yes.
Mr. Michael? Mr. Palumbo?
Yes.
Mr. Gary?
Did we make the motion?
I made it in a resolution.
Okay.
Is that, what is your vote?
Yes, just take the shot.
Mayor fight?
Yes.
So shouldn't we technically make a motion and second that?
She read the resolution.
Okay.
That's on my, um-
Anybody got anything to say? Michael? Palumbo?
I have to say that Uniontown High School's playing baseball at Bailey Park this year. Um, the the baseball field is not totally one hundred percent completed, but it is very, it is playable. I will say that there's some disappointment, though, somebody broke into the new storage facility behind one of the new dugouts and broke open the doors, set a fire inside, burned some debris. It's kind of disheartening when things like that happen, when you're trying to, you know, as a collective group, you're trying to improve the city in every way possible, and, you know, the people out there, a small group of people who try to undermine that. But we're being handled, and I have some ideas on how to make it to the facility more secure. I'll talk over with mayor and council later date. That's all I have. And also, we do have a little league, uh, league coming in to play ball this summer. From another park, so it's gonna be used a lot. It's gonna be good to see kids down there playing. So baseball is back at Bailey as of now, so.
Mr. Gary? We went over it a little earlier with Mr. Allesic. I'd like to thank him again for his time and his service. Would also like to, we, in my box today, finally, we have the two thousand ten and two thousand eleven single-lotted reports. When is is McLaurin Wolf gonna do a presentation?
Yes.
On on these reports? I guess will that be in the the April? The April meeting?
Yeah, I thought they'd be here tonight, but they weren't.
It was a conflict of schedule. We'll, we'll be special. This is, um, this is their busy season, too. We'll get, they're gonna come.
Okay, I guess that's it.
Okay, right there. They resolve by City Uniontown, the City Council, City Uniontown, the Council, John, we meet Wednesday, April third, at four thirty P.M. Mr. Michael, yes. Mr. Jones? Mr. Palumbo?
Yes.
Mr. Gary?
Yes.
Mayor, Ed fight?
Yes.
I'm just saying, Mayor, Ed, we're all fighting.
That's our knowledge.